Okay, good evening. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence their cell phones. Welcome to our special city council meeting. I hope everyone can hear me outside as well and is at home. Thank for this meeting. While I'm talking, I am going to remove my mask so that way I am clear and there is no distortion of what I am trying to say. So if everyone's okay with that, plus I am not sick. So welcome to the special session 5:30 PM on May 11th, city council meeting on the housing element. Steve, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Miles?
Present.
All counted for.
Thank you. All right, before we do our pledge of allegiance, Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman has a special request that I would like us all to pay attention to, please.
So I'd like to take a moment of silence. Principal Lisa Ogan over at Saravilla, her husband passed away this past weekend. Lisa's been a pillar in the community. The amount of work she does for the kids and for the school is tremendous. Her husband passed away in an auto or motorcycle accident on Sunday, and I can't express the tragedy and the loss, except to say that I'd like to offer our condolences and prayers. And I'd just like to take a moment to be silent.
Thank you. Our condolences and prayers out to Ms. Ogan and her family. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. If you would stand, place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. Ready, begin?
On pledge of allegiance, Mrs. Susan Byatt, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to have, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action can be taken on any agenda items. So if you're here for public comment on the housing element, now is not the time for you to come do public comment. But I would like to offer public comment for the rest of the viewers, if there is any, you will have three minutes each. So do we have any ready for public comment on an off-agenda item?
No, Mayor, not this time.
And nobody wrote in or?
Not for the evening, not for the meeting this evening.
Okay. Thank you. So if you will all grant me about seven minutes of your time, I would like to make a statement. So before we begin with new business and open the public hearing, I would like to take a few minutes to recognize and thank all the residents that have participated by calling in, emailing, phone calls, emails, and providing input for this meeting this evening. First, thank you to everyone who commented, wrote in, emailed, or phoned in to convey their thoughts and perspectives. In reading and hearing some of the perspectives, I wanted to make it clear to everyone that the state of California is requiring this housing element mandate. It is not your city council. It is not your city staff. So in some of our emails that we have received, residents are under the impression that it is us that is asking all of us to accommodate this affordable housing mandate. And I just want to please make sure everyone understands, this is directed by the state, also known as HCD, which is Housing and Community Development. This did not originate from us, your city council, nor your city staff. In fact, every city in California is faced with a housing mandate and have their own RENA numbers. RENA, R-H-N-A, for those that aren't familiar, stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It's our number of affordable housing units that the state has decided that this city needs to somehow demonstrate we can absorb. Our number is 296. Every city has a different number. Second, some clarification on what low income is. Low-income affordable housing. We're referring to the needs of seven different categories of affordable housing. These are persons not, can include, up to and including, persons with disabilities or special needs, persons with developmental disabilities, elderly, large families, farm workers, families with women as head of household, and families and persons in need of emergency shelter. So affordable housing does not necessarily just mean low or very, very low income. Third, I've had, as I'm sure the rest of my council have, emails asking why we don't fight this, and it appears as though we're just giving in. So I'd like to offer that if the city does not comply with the state law and obtain a certified housing element by the October 15th, 2021 deadline, we stand to lose local control of planning and of land use. The state could freeze building permits. We could lose eligibility for grants, accrue daily fines and penalties and other punitive damages that the state sees fit. If we refuse to comply, the state could usurp any and all of our local control. And so some of the items that you are here fighting for this evening, if we don't comply, we would have no option to remove them, vote for them. The state could do them irrespective of what we want. So we're trying to avoid that situation, although it may appear like we're just giving in, we're not. And please recognize that this council is working hard and diligently to try to come up with a scenario or scenarios that will be the least impactful on the greatest number of residents. Finally, we, and I mean all of us, because even your elected officials, we are all residents within this city. We are at a no-win situation. We are forced to comply with a highly disruptive mandate that no one wants in their own backyard. We don't, we don't want it. One can agree there is a need for affordable housing, but why must it come at the cost of altering the appearance and complexion of our neighborhoods and our community? Tonight, all of the available options will be discussed, and we as a council must come up with a reasonable, and I believe our goal is reasonable and least impactful to the majority of the residents, housing plan. Fellow council, we must take on this responsibility with the utmost of care, recognizing that no matter what option we present to HCD, Housing and Community Development, everyone in our city is going to be impacted in one way or another. How we get to that plan is up to us. And with the resident input, city staff input, our housing consultants input, the comments, dialogues, and perspectives of our residents, I believe we can work together to satisfy the mandate and still maintain our beautiful community. We are all in this together. This is not one versus another. We must remember why residents move here and stay for decades, why residents choose Villa Park to raise their families. We must remember why residents reside here, establishing their roots, building relationships, being part of a community. It's our small town. It's our schools. It's our low crime rate, our small-town center as a wonderful meeting place, and the extraordinary community of caring, kind residents, our groups and organizations that come to a resident's aid when needed or put on great events that build up our community together. None of the options presented tonight are desirable by anyone. And we must consider that whatever option or options we choose to submit to HCD, they could likely happen. That's why we must consider things like potential traffic, impact of property values, noise, safety, economic feasibility, and other community impacts must be considered before a plan gets seriously submitted. As elected officials, we have a duty and obligation to exhaust all options. We do not have the luxury of assuming a proposed zoning option won't come to fruition. If we propose it, we have to assume it will likely happen. Some of these options on the agenda tonight, if part of our housing element, could be devastating to homeowners' property values and goes against our general plan's land-use goal to maintain and enhance the desirable qualities of the neighborhoods that comprise the community. So, in the interest of public and out of respect for everyone's time, before I start on new business and ask the city manager for a staff report, followed by public comment, where you all will have an opportunity to come up and speak, I'm going to make the motion to remove a few of the items on the potential list of rezoning options now, before we open the public hearing. These few items, if left on, would be more detrimental to specific neighborhoods and communities within the city of Villa Park over other options. The items, council, that I would like to have removed this evening. Item number 10 on the agenda, Wanda. It is most intrusive, already the most highly-dense section of Villa Park, drastically changes the appearance of a neighborhood, will significantly drop the housing price value, there is the Kinder Morgan fuel line, and traffic and safety does not meet the city of Villa Park's general plan land-use goal of maintaining and enhancing the desirable qualities of that community. The other item I would like to remove is item number 1, 7, and 8, they all go together. That's the 11 vacant lots. This will significantly alter the E4 lot, thus changing the appearance of a neighborhood. And since one of the options is to reduce the minimum lot size to 8,000 square feet, this will completely change the complexion of the city and again does not meet the city of Villa Park's general plan's land-use goal of maintaining and enhancing desirable qualities of neighborhoods that comprise the community. These are privately-owned lots. Allowing rezoning of these vacant lots will be more intrusive than keeping the proposed affordable housing along the periphery, plus SB9 will accomplish the same result. For those of you that don't know, SB9 is in the pipeline now. It is up in Sacramento and will impact every city in every corner of California. SB9 will allow lot-splitting if passed, and that will start January of 2022. I do not want to be responsible for rezoning what the government will most likely usurp the control over in January of 2022. And finally and last, the item I'd like to remove is the school surplus. It's not ours to rezone. It's a great idea and a great concept, but the school district has indicated no desire to close any Villa Park school at this time, and therefore it would be disingenuous to attempt to meet our RENA number by offering this, especially when we know OUSD is not interested. I'd like to have a motion, I'm making the motion to remove item 10, 1, 7, 8, and 9, if I could have a second.
I will second with, with an amendment. I would, I would like to add, for the very same reasons that you've identified for removing the other items, remove the Tropical Plaza nursery item. This is a very small parcel, and it's adjacent to a school. And the, the street Santiago in Serrano, which abut those, that property, is already highly impacted, as we've discussed on many occasions in these council chambers. Adding an additional 76 units and probably twice as many automobiles plus children into that, that mix is another recipe for disaster. So I'd like to second with amendment of adding item number 6, the Tropical Plaza nursery.
Councilman Pitts?
I, I'd already seconded it before the motion was made. I'd like to see the Tropical Nursery be talked about later on.
So the maker of the motion would have to accept the amendment prior to it being discussed?
Well, so if we have a first, a second, then it's a motion on the table. Bob, you can make an amendment. Yeah, that's in order, even when there's a second. And, you know, all of this, we can make motions, but there can't be a vote until there's public comment on everything, so.
Now, would his be a substitute motion?
It would be a substitute.
Okay, thank you, just for clarification.
Yeah, Robbie was there first, so it's not an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so there's a substitute motion with Tropical Plaza on the table, waiting for a second. And if there's no second, then it dies, and it goes back to this motion, which can't be voted on until everybody.
Second.
So you, so there, now the substitute motion's on the table. And somebody can do another substitute motion if you wish.
But we can't vote on, on this at all right now. Those are just, we can make the motions, we either, in the interest.
Give the option for public comment if people decide, yeah, your name, it's up to them.
Yeah, I mean, hearing this, people can talk about it or not talk about it, but there can't be any final action or a vote on anything until the public has a chance to.
Can their council comment with respect to the other, since it is a motion and second? Can the council discuss it?
Absolutely.
So the council can express their desires or whatever, but not take an official vote?
Not until people have had the chance to speak.
So you have the ability, the council has the ability to express their position relative to the motion?
Sure, it's a legislative act.
So they, they can go ahead and express what they believe the motion is or is not appropriate or acceptable or whatever.
So is there any, Chad, would you like to comment?
I would love to comment, thank you. So I'm in favor of the original motion and would like to hear discussion about the additional property on the Tropical Plaza.
Well, Tropical Plaza has been, that motion has failed, so.
That would be the second one.
That has, that, well, did, no, wait, it wasn't a vote.
It succeeded.
Oh, I'm sorry, did get a motion, I'm sorry.
We need to wait for a public comment.
So, yeah, so that would have a, a public comment on that.
People are allowed to give public comment on any of this.
Yeah.
So I think what, what I was trying to achieve was, by removing some of these options, some of the people would not necessarily need to give the public comment because they're here in opposition of these items, so.
I think what I was trying to say is, if the council wanted to express their position without taking a formal vote, the council could do that.
Oh, so I understand.
So they could do that and communicate their intent to the public so that may or may not affect people's interest and desire to speak.
Okay.
So if they know what the action might be, they may say, let it happen, we'll go for it.
Okay, so I understand.
That was my point, I think that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, so if 70, you know, speakers are here to, you know, to vote, to, to express their opinions for five minutes each about something the council's not even going to do, it might be more time-efficient, yeah, to express one's views on that, so people know.
Yeah, so you, you have the ability, but the council has the option individually of expressing their views without expressing and taking a formal vote.
So what if we, what if we had one or two of the representatives that?
Well, I guess, do you want to have the council members take, discuss it? Because that's what the whole point was, to get the council to express their views.
Sure. All right, let's have the council express their views then.
I am adamantly against Wanda. Period. End of discussion.
Okay. Bob?
Yes, I've, as I stated at the last public hearing, I'm opposed to any of the options that would directly impact our established residential neighborhoods or be adjacent to schools. All of the, all the options that were identified by Crystal and her motion and my addition of Tropical Plaza would do that. They would directly impact adjacent residential neighborhoods, and in the Tropical Plaza case, would directly impact Serrano Elementary. In particular, I, I believe that this is appropriate because we do have two alternatives that are identified on the list that do provide for meeting the RENA goal without impacting established residential neighborhoods or schools. And those are rezoning the, the town center and the gravel pits along Villa Park Road, otherwise known as the Smith Basin.
So Bob, can I interrupt you, please? So, so for right now, can we please talk about the motions? Because we haven't even opened up the public hearing yet for the rest of it. Robbie?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I wanted to, you know, vote on the first one and not the second one is because I believe we all have to have many options to present to the state. It can't be just one, and it can't be certainly, possibly two, because we also have to look down the road in the next three to four years, because I think you'll hear from the consultant tonight that the state's going to monitor our progress with this. And we, we might be right, right back in the same boat four years from now, with a new council potentially doing the same thing over because we didn't choose correctly tonight. So I think we need to go through as many options as possible, talk through them, see about the opposition, and make our choices at that time. I do not want Wanda. I didn't want Wanda in the first place, because I thought it was a safety hazard and other reasons, so I'm vehemently opposed to it. So I would suggest that we consider the first vote that you put forth, and I seconded it, and, and then keep the Tropical Nursery for a later discussion.
Chad?
In case it wasn't clear, I thought that's, the general consensus is that it seems like we have 1, 7, 8, 9, and 10, including Wanda, and all of the residential properties. All of the council are opposed to those, and we want to remove those. So that seems like that's unanimous. And I don't think I have anything else to add to that. I think that covers it.
My comment is yes. I think that we need to remove, and I agree totally opposed to Wanda. I'm also opposed, which is number 10, number 1, 7, 8, and 9. And as far as the Tropical Nursery, I think that is a discussion later. I don't think we should lump that together now, as Councilman Pitts said, not because I'm for it this cycle. I just don't know if, if removing that one particularly is going to help us at a later date, so I'm sticking with my original motion at that point. So now, should I ask you for the staff report? And then we can open it to public comment. And I think everyone understands that we are in agreement that 10, 1, 7, 8, and 9 should be removed.
I think it's pretty clear that, for those listening, that that would be, to the extent that a vote would be taken, that would be the probable outcome.
At least.
It, it can't be taken at this time, obviously, until there's public input. But to the extent that any speakers want to still address or change their ideas about comments, they have the, they now have some knowledge about where the council's going. So with that, so thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. We'll be keeping it very brief. I've got John Douglas, our consultant, and Ray Pasqua, our planning manager here as well. This is our fourth public meeting since December to discuss the planning for our housing element. As far as it goes, the actual housing element is due to the state October 15th. Our initial plan was submitted, our initial draft was submitted for comments, and that relied primarily on accessory dwelling units, and that was rejected firmly by the state in, in February. Subsequent to that, we identified, a number, a number of options were identified, and the council directed in April that those, we seek public input process. So subsequent to April, we had submitted to every single resident, was mailed a informational package about what the potential options would be, an explanation about what the process entailed, and as much information as we had relative to each of the potential options, without going into a lot of the details. We have, since my staff and I, Ray and I have, and all the staff have dealt with a number of responses, calls, inquiries. You have before you a log of letters that we received with the information and a summary of each. We've received approximately 130 or so written correspondence. There's also been a lot of telephone, just questions, what's the process or whatever. Those aren't recorded. I will have to say, a majority of those have been opposed to the Wanda Fitch and Road, French and Ranch Road rezoning, so that's the majority of those letters. This will be a public record, and we'll provide that in our package of the minutes. So that will be, but you have, you have a copy there. The list you have before you was through 4, through 4:45 this afternoon. I received another three at the start of this meeting, so those will be added, and we'll continue to add those to the log of, of the thing. So our point this evening is an attempt to move forward in the process and narrow, and be able to come up with, narrow the options down, to provide state HCD with a second draft, and that our hope is to provide that to them in June. The state would have in 60 days to respond, and our hope is that we would have something very close to a final version at that time, hoping the state would agree to what our proposal is, or if there's some minor tweaks. Our, our process would be, in August, we would expect to have some comments back, and so late August, early September, or in sometime in September, it would be our hope to be able to go back to the council, and the council would have to go through a public hearing in which they adopt the final housing element, which is due again to the state October 15th. So that is sort of the process we're going with. Tonight, we're trying to narrow down and move forward, continue to make progress. I would like to offer that this is not a, an issue that's dealing, specifically Villa Park is dealing with alone. All of my fellow cities in California are doing this. City managers are pulling their hair out, doing the same exercise either now, or have started, or will be doing this over the next couple of months. So there's a, a consistent effort. A lot of this is triggered, and I can answer some questions real quick up front, then I'll shift over to the, our consultant who can fill it in. The planning number for the state is 5 million homes over the next eight years. So that's an extensive number of homes that have to be built. The Southern California region is 1.3 million. While we can and disagree with the formula that is used, basically, it's set legislatively. We don't have a choice about that, and we're, it's sort of, the state legislature has delegated to HCD, State Housing and Community Development Department, the control and the administration of that process. So as far as the numbers being applied, a number of, there were 55 appeals to the Southern California numbers by individual cities. Of those 55, only two were ruled in favor by, and adjusted. And those specifically had to do with floodplain adjustments that were made by, subsequent to the adoption of those numbers, the prior adoption of those numbers. So that was a sort of a technical issue, if you will. Of the 17 Orange County cities, every one of them was denied. So I'd be very candid that, that the process is a very one-sided process, and that's not to say that we certainly didn't express our opposition, our concerns with the process and the numbers, but we are, the 296. By comparison, our number last time was 14. So the number has dramatically increased, and that's done by Sacramento, it's not done locally. I would want to reemphasize, because almost everybody has said, what are the, and you had mentioned it earlier, the implications, I would like to emphasize, the implications of non-compliance are pretty potentially severe. Loss of local zoning control, potential zoning directives by the courts, we are subject, we could be subject to litigation, and we could potentially have fines, significant level of fines, depending on what HCD saw appropriate, and loss of the ability to potentially administer or issue our own building permits locally. So for those of you who come into counter and right now get a building permit, or do it online with us in, in Villa Park, that would be a much different process down the road. So that's, that's the implication, loss of local control. So the very fact that you would be picking and having a discussion tonight of zoning could be overruled by the courts or somebody far and distant from that, besides local residents, helping to decide what we want. So that implication is pretty severe. Now, where does that go from here? I think that's obviously something that we'll see. But what, but our effort is to try and come up with a plan that is, like you say, as workable as possible, and it's our job as staff to take what the council gives us tonight and try and formulate and put, put that into a plan that will work for the, for the state HCD and gets possibly a, a positive results. So the, the other thing I'd like to say is that, and emphasize, this is a planning exercise. The city will not be building any development, nor will we be using eminent domain for anything ordering. That is not something that's required as part of this process, and I need to make that real clear, because we get a lot of phone calls about that. The city absolutely is not requiring anybody to build something. This is a zoning effort and a zoning process. We have to make sure that our zoning codes, our zoning, zoning codes, and basically our development guidelines, et cetera, do not restrict the ability to do that. But I would emphasize, like the mayor says, any zoning that you do as a result of this, you have to recognize potentially could materialize at some point. So you can't sort of put it out there and not let it happen. Several cities have done that and have been sued by the state. So the most recent being Huntington Beach, I believe, Todd, where they had zoning that, they just, they attempted to deny a project that was within zoned area, and the state had litigation there, and I can let Todd fill that in.
It did not go well for Huntington Beach.
Yeah. So with that being said, I don't think we want to be in that situation, as, I, these are onerous requirements, I, the numbers are large, but I think it's our obligation, you know, we, we are entrusted with the responsibility to comply with the law, and the law is the law. So whether we like it or not, we have to comply. That doesn't mean the law can't change, and we can't advocate for change down the road, but I think right now we're there. I will, also, I want to make sure that everyone understands that these estimates are provided with each option. Those are estimates that the council asked us to give them an idea of what the potential zoning might yield. So it is not a firm number. So if you, for instance, if we were to say, you know, you're going to rezone the town center, you wouldn't come up with that exact number. The developer would come forward and say they want to pull forward these number of units or whatever, and it would be up to the city. We would zone as far as maximum capacity of those areas. So it would be a responsibility of a developer to come forward and say that. So we may say something zoned for 100 units, and the developer might say, you know, financially, I'm only going to build 80, but they can't come in and build 150 without council sort of changing or doing that. So that, that's sort of what you're. So that's, that's sort of what you're doing. You're setting a capitated amount on those. So what we're trying to do is give you an estimate. Our requirement is to come up with 296. And as far as that goes, we have not done significant environmental, traffic, any of those types of studies, because the council one hasn't taken action. And much of that responsibility will in fact fall on potentially a developer. Should the developer come forward, we may request a traffic study, or we may request certain things, types of things on certain types of projects. So there is a lot of a process to go. There is a zoning process that would have to happen, too. This is not a zoning change. This is a plan for a zoning change. The council would have to actually enact a zoning change at some point down the road, and that would be an action item, should the state approve this and the council willing, decide to go forward. That involves public hearing processes, et cetera. So this is a first stage of a process, but it's amending our general plan from that purposes. So I will let, as far as dealing with HCD, we have John Douglas, who's been doing this for a number of years, and Ray Pasqua, et cetera. We are very fortunate, have both of them working for us on this. John's an independent consultant, but I've known John for a lot of years. He did this with the county, et cetera. And John can fill us in. I'd like, John, to sort of give us an idea of what he thinks the state would require of a plan, if you would. John?
Yes, thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I think that the mayor and the city manager have given a very good overview of the, the challenge that the city is facing, and so I'm not going to reiterate any of those points. I would like to mention, for those residents who may be watching a meeting on this topic for the first time this evening, I would direct your attention to the staff report that is provided on the city's website for the council meeting this evening, that has various pieces of information in it, include, including a frequently asked questions document that goes into some more detail about the requirements, the state requirements that the city is facing now, as well as a list of options that have been generated, and that are going to be the topic of discussion this evening. And so I would encourage those who are interested to avail themselves of that information. With regard to specifically the requirements of the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development, let me just shed a little bit more light on that, if I can. As has been mentioned previously, every city within Southern California is going through the process right now of updating that, what's called the housing element of the general plan. And that is the master plan for the long-term development of the city. Every eight years, cities are required to update that plan, the housing element of that plan, to identify where future housing can be accommodated through zoning in the city. Now, the state legislature has delegated authority to the California Department of Housing and Community Development to review those local housing elements, Villa Parks and every other cities in Southern California, and issue an opinion as to whether they comply with state law or not. And what we're focusing on this evening is a critical component of state housing law, and that is that every city must adopt zoning regulations that can accommodate additional growth in order to provide housing for the future needs of our residents. And so, as has been mentioned by the mayor and the city manager, there is a process by which every city is allocated a share of that future housing need in California. Villa Park's need for housing over the next eight years has been assigned to the city as 296 additional units. Now, I want to, I want to reiterate what has been said by the city manager and the mayor before, and that is that the city is not required to either build those units, or pay for the construction of those units, or to achieve that level of construction. This is a mandate that the state has issued, that the city adopt plans and zoning regulations that would allow property owners and developers to build that housing if they so choose. No property owner is required to build housing as a result of this process, and no developer is required to expend money to develop housing as a part of this process. But the city is very much required to adopt regulations that would allow such housing to be built. So that's very important to keep in mind. This is not a mandate that the city go out and build housing units. Now, what the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development looks at very closely as part of this process of updating the housing element, is the city's plans for accommodating that allocation. In our case, it's 296 additional units over the next eight years. And so what we have done is, we've identified the current capacity. And so if you look at the staff report for this evening's meeting, there are a number of options, starting on page three of the staff report. And the first three options, that's items 1, 2, and 3 in the staff report this evening, describe what is currently allowed under the city's zoning regulations. And so that is comprised of additional single-family homes based on vacant lots, and there's approximately 11 vacant lots in town, and some of those are larger than the minimum lot size, and so they might be able to be split according to current zoning regulations. And so we've estimated that there's roughly potential for 25 additional single-family homes based on those vacant lots that are in town today. This wouldn't require any change to zoning regulations in order to build 25 additional single-family homes. And the second category has to do with the town center. And several years ago, the city adopted an amendment to the zoning regulations in the town center that would allow housing or mixed use, which is a mix of housing and commercial on the same property, for the two parcels in the northeastern corner of the town center. And that's where City Hall and the library sit, and the office building that's just to the east of City Hall and the library. So, so that option number two reflects the existing zoning regulations for those two parcels in the northeast corner of the town center. And based on those regulations, it's estimated that about 28 additional multifamily, that is condo or apartment-type, units could be built on those two properties if the owners of those properties wished to pursue development. And then the third category, under existing law, has to do with accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Used to be called second units or granny flats. These are units that are added to existing residential properties, and state law currently allows two accessory units on residential, on single-family residential lots, under a limited set of restrictions. And so it's estimated that if we had, if the city saw applications for about 10 units, 10 accessory dwelling units per year over the next eight years, then that would create the potential for about 80 additional units. So these three categories are based on existing regulations. No change required in order to create the capacity for those units. And, and those three categories add up to roughly 130 additional housing units that can be built over the next eight years. Now, what, why we're having this meeting this evening is because there is a shortfall between that approximately 130 units and the approximately 300 units, 296, that have been assigned to Villa Park as its responsibility to accommodate over the next eight years. And so the remainder of this table that's in the staff report goes through the various alternatives that the city could pursue in order to create additional capacity. Now, it, it's, it's going to be deliberated for the rest of this meeting, which of those options are most appropriate for the city. How HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, will look at this, is, is to feel assured that there is going to be realistic capacity for additional housing to be built. And what that, what that realistic capacity comes down to is having multiple options so that all the eggs are not in one basket, so to speak. And so the, the state will feel more comfortable that the city is pursuing a reasonable path if there are multiple options that could achieve the city's allocated housing need. And so the more options that the city can put on the table, then the more likely it is that the state will accept the city's approach and grant approval, or what's called certification, to the housing element. So that's, that's the essence of it. It is not a quantitative or precise calculation of A equals B. There is some art and some judgment that goes into this, both on the part of the city and also on the part of the state. And so the, the best, the best guidance I think I could give in trying to interpret how the state will review this is that the more options the city presents for additional housing, then the more likely it is that the state will approve the city's housing plan going forward. So I think I will pause there, be happy to answer any questions that there may be, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Douglas. Appreciate all your thorough and clear explanations. Just in case at this time, I want to make sure that we have opened the public hearing based on receiving the staff presentation. What I'd like to do now is go ahead and open for public comment, and if possible, if I could check with our city attorney. Based on my first motion of removing items from the agenda, number 10, number 1, 7, 8, and number 9, and the fact there was a second, I know there's a coalition of people here represented by one or two individuals. Is it acceptable to allow those individuals to speak for the group so we could vote on that motion, and therefore, if people felt that they were adequately represented, they could choose to stay or leave? Not limiting anybody else who wanted to offer public comment, but at least that way we could go ahead and move with that motion and get it off and proceed with the rest of the evening?
Yeah, I would recommend, did I turn on my mic? I would recommend that we just do, let everybody speak and have the motion at the end, to be safer, given the procedural microscope we may be under.
Okay, understood.
Whomever's looking through a microscope.
Am I allowed to ask for public comment on those specific items first? Okay, then I will go ahead and open it for public comment on these specific items, recognizing that we will have public comment on other items on the agenda, but for right now, based on the motion and the second, it would be item number 10, which is the Wanda, green belt. Items 1, 7, and 8, which deals with the 11 vacant lots for item number 1. Number 7, reducing minimum lot size for vacant, underutilized lots to 8,000 square feet. And reduce minimum lot size for other developed lots. And then item number 9 on the school surplus, OUSD. So if anyone would like to have public comment on that, I will ask, we're going to allow three minutes per public comment. You will get a 30-second warning, and at the end of the 30 seconds, we'll ask that you finish and step down. To be fair to everybody that's here, there are a lot of people here, and we want to make sure that we can cycle through everybody. Once you have made your public comment, we politely ask that you step outside and let one of the remaining individuals that are outside waiting patiently to be able to come in and take your seat. That way, everyone is represented equally. So at this point now, I'm going to open up to public comment. Is this a question, or are you asking to go first?
Comment that might help out.
Sure. Go ahead.
Take less than three minutes.
My name is Bernie Vichus. I've been a resident of Villa Park for 35 years, a little longer. Raised my family here, and I still have grandchildren and daughters that come and visit quite frequently. Pretending to the Wanda and a pipeline, having a home over any pipeline or very close to it, it could be disastrous. We have earthquakes here. Several years ago, I had a natural gas leak outside along my driveway. It took a lot of effort and immediate response to make it safe. So with a pipeline there, I have a very hard time seeing how Wanda could be acceptable for safety. That was the only comment I had to make for Wanda. The second one is, if, we're going to have to rezone. If you could rezone all of them, currently, you'd have to have 8,000 more, or more square feet. And when somebody sells their home, we have contractors that would also bid on it and possibly divide it. That's not eminent domain, it's a way of possibly achieving our goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could we ask for your comp, your blue slip for the record? Thank you, sir.
We are open for public comment.
So we would ask if you have the comments on those items that were so identified, if you could step up to the podium, and I would ask you actually if it's fine if you want to line up behind them. And if you would, as you step to there and you speak, could you please give Alyssa your blue slip, and that's for the record, and then you have three minutes from the time you begin speaking.
I'll be quick. I live on Buckley Circle, and, you know, right on Fitz and Ranch Road. We just moved in less than five months ago, so we're excited to be in the neighborhood, and our daughter plays on that cul-de-sac. The rezoning and building out onto Wanda would just severely affect how we view our home now. We understand that those streets would now be overflow parking for the residents and their guests. I just, I couldn't imagine a worse situation. We probably wouldn't stay. So I just, I hope that you take into consideration, you know, the younger families that are coming in that want to live here and that are excited as well, and hopefully, you know, we can find a good solution that's great for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Adams.
We could have your blue slip as you walk up.
Oh, I took notes on it. I'll have to fill out another one.
Okay, if you could do it before you leave, because we need that for the record. Thank you.
I've lived here 25 years. John Douglas said that the town center, the granny flats, and possibly 11 vacant lots could be made up into 150 additional units. There was no mention of affordable housing or low income. Are we saying that fortunately we don't have to deal with that, or that it can be, anybody can buy a lot now, or it has to be a, some kind of income restriction?
So I can answer that if you want.
Sure.
So it is presumed that if you allow building at a certain density, i.e. X number of units on a lot, that you will meet affordability limits. So if you have more density on a lot, that usually means smaller properties, right? And then that is presumed under the law to meet housing, affordable housing requirements.
So if a lot is 21,000 square feet, and somebody wants to buy 21,000 square feet, how does that relate to that?
I think I understand what you're asking. So if I have, if I have a 21,000-square-foot lot, and we have, we have gone ahead and said that we can allow for smaller lot sizes, rezoning of lots, then, then a person, developer, whomever, could purchase that 21,000-square-foot lot, split it into a minimum of 8,000, and perhaps produce multifamily units on both lots. And so now you've now reduced that 21,000 lot size into two smaller lots.
You keep asking about the ones you want to eliminate, but other than the town center and the granny flats and the 11 vacant lots, what else is available that we're talking about? Why are we removing some things before, in fact, we don't know what the entire?
We're not removing the granny flats. That wasn't, that wasn't brought up.
No, I know we're not. But the granny flats and the town center and the vacant lots are not being eliminated. So what are the rest of the things available to us before we remove?
Well, we will.
Surplus, et cetera, et cetera. What's the whole game plan here?
Well, we will have open, we will have a discussion amongst our council members on the items. Right now is the public comment for you to be able to give your input, and we will go through the rest of the items. These are all the items that are available right now. Do you have a copy of this?
I do, but I left it on my counter, of course.
She's going to put it up on the screen in just a second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and do we have, don't we have a whole bunch in there?
Yeah, we do. We do.
So.
Okay, well, that would be great. So as a resident, the Newsom Gestapo is not coming to my door, saying they have to, they're going to build a, something on my land.
I can't answer that. What I can say is that SB 9 could possibly cause what you're asking me with the lot splitting, SB 9 could in fact happen, irrespective of what we decide here.
Well, let me, let me clarify. Nobody can come to your house and tell you you have to do something, so that won't happen. You have the ability to say, look, I want to do it myself, or I want to sell it to somebody who might want to do that, if it was zoned that way. But you were talking about somebody coming to your door and telling you you have to do something? Absolutely not. That's not part of the process, and that's not what would happen.
But your next-door neighbor could.
And if, and if a home was available in the neighborhood, and a developer chose to buy it as opposed to a private party, and it was rezoned, then he could put four houses on there or whatever.
Correct.
Yes.
Which would destroy Villa Park.
Absolutely. Councilman Pitts.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, one second. Ma'am, can I?
She's going, she's going to get the blue slip.
Oh, she's good, okay.
They're taking care of that.
My apologies. Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Jones, and I, as many here, feel that there are no options presented that are agreeable to our residents, so we need to come up with a plan that is least, least offensive of all of these options. I am not at all in favor of rezoning Wanda Road, and that option needs to be taken off the table entirely, as you've proposed. The impact to those residents is greater than the impact of any of the other options presented. I also feel that reducing the minimum lot size for the other developed lots is an option that also needs to be taken out of consideration, since there is no area on Villa Park that would be amenable to having their streets rezoned while others are not. I do feel that increasing the number of ADUs in our plan is a viable and achievable option. Since we have met the annual goal under the current estimated capacity of 10 ADUs a year already in 2021, it is likely that this trend would continue, and we could achieve several additional units in this manner. I also think rezoning the town center is another option which would allow for a mixed-use development close to a mass transit option unlike any of the other options presented. Many other cities are finding these RHNA goals unattainable as well. Several of our state senators, echoing? Several of our state senators made a formal request to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee earlier this month to look at the Department of Housing and Community Development's determination process for RHNA. So I would like to encourage our city officials, as well as the residents here and watching this meeting, to contact their state legislators and encourage them to sign on to this formal request for audit, so we can at least attempt to mitigate this unrealistic goal for a city that is 99% built out. I feel that we should also request that we be given credit from the state for the number of units that we went over on our fifth planning cycle allocation. Villa Park is willing to do our part, but let's set realistic goals, and then we can work to achieve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for your motion. Thank you. I represent the neighbors of the Wanda Road, and we've come here, you've seen our website. We've had over 13, 1,300 people visit that website. We've had over 170 people sign on to that, residents in Villa Park. We've had over 116 people send emails to us, and I know this happened to you. You know the passion that we feel, so thank you very much for giving this motion here. I'm hoping that I can represent us and say, that website, their emails, that represents us. You know our story. Thank you for your vote now. Hopefully, we can get a vote through and then move on. Also, all that came out back there, thank you very much back there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Colette. Next.
Hello, councilmembers, mayor. Patty Whitman, I'm on Prado Woods Drive, which is just directly behind us. There is a left-turn pocket on Villa Park Road directly onto Prado Woods Drive, which is a thoroughfare, and lots of people use it to get to the high school and the shopping center. The Wanda idea is going to be, it's going to create significant safety risk to the families that live there. There are young families moving in now, which is what we want. We want new families coming. I was born and raised here, my dad was a business owner here, and I'm very much vested in doing the right thing, but also what's right for my neighbors and selfishly for myself. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Colette May, and I live on Laconia Drive off of Aberdeen. I grew up here. I went to school here, Villa Park Elementary, through the high school. This is, Villa Park was being developed the whole time I was growing up and even after. When I moved back in 2004, I assumed it was pretty much done being developed. As I, as you'll read in my email that I sent tonight, after looking up Villa Park history, because I remembered it vaguely, but I had to refresh my memory, why Villa Park became the city of Villa Park, and why it's not part of the city of Orange. And that is because they did not want to have the urban sprawl and to have the congestion, the mass congestion of people. I don't mind the idea of the town center being a mixed use. I think that's fine. I have no problem with that. I, I'm, I, what I do have a problem with is any idea that dividing a lot into multiple lots. And thinking, I guess I grew up on a cul-de-sac, and I'm thinking of, right now, we have cars like crazy where I live from the apartments across of Collins. What's going to happen when you have multiple people living next door to you and on your, or up the street or on your street? Currently, we have a house on our street, actually, it's not Laconia, it's the, the street that, or Laconia turns into, where there are multiple people living directly next door to us. There are several, several young people living next door to us. On Lincoln, there is an assisted living home. Are those counted in this proposal?
No, it's only for new construction, new housing.
So even though the house that existed as a single family, and it has since become during this eight-year period, a multiple living situation, that won't be considered, or can that be considered?
Nope.
Okay, well, I know, all I can say is I'm absolutely against any development. I think it takes away from the charge of our, or the charm of our city.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mary Solzell, a 48-year resident of Villa Park. After hours of thought and discussion and research, I believe that the right priority for the city would be to identify and designate the 22-and-a-half-acre site on Villa Park Road as multifamily zoning, and then to work with the Orange County Water District to complete work that must be done to bring this site to a safe and usable condition. As this is being done, we, community members, as a city and as a compliant city, should work together to meet what I think is the major affordable housing need in our city, provision for our own senior residents who find themselves challenged to deal with aging and maintaining their large homes and lots. Villa Park has been identified by the state as a city with an exceptionally high level of older residents. These are our friends and neighbors, longtime residents of Villa Park, who have invested their hearts, energy, and funds in our city, and have contributed in every way to making and keeping Villa Park the hidden jewel we all love and seek to preserve. It's sad that there's no alternative for these beloved friends to remain in the city when they need to downscale their living arrangements, that they're faced with leaving their friends and neighbors, their familiar shopping, women's league activities, community service foundation events like concerts and civic activities, simply because there is no safe and easier option for them as their mobility declines. Many older residents fit the qualification by the state for affordable housing, since their main income may be social security, and their cost of living has been kept within an affordable range by Prop 13, control of their taxes and their own frugal living. I ask our residents to look at this location as an opportunity to continue the friendly neighborly concern for each other. It's been the hallmark of Villa Park during my 48 years here. By joining together and actively seeking opportunities to encourage development of a small facility here at home, I believe we can find a way that our seniors won't be forced to leave Villa Park for locations in nearby cities. I personally don't want to give up shared time with these friends, and I don't want to leave Villa Park myself if I find myself challenged to be able to remain in my home. So let's make this a Villa Park crusade. Let's get behind the idea of a senior living facility on this site as a non-invasive improvement on what's an ISO location.
30 seconds, please.
And help our city council and city staff meet the needs of our own residents while meeting the state's mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could please comment, as much as, as much as I agree that the city of Villa Park would benefit from some sort of senior housing, irrespective of whatever decisions we come to as a council in meeting our arena needs, unfortunately, we are not allowed to dictate what kind of affordable housing goes in. That would be entirely up to a potential developer, so yes, I agree, the city of Villa Park would be well-suited to have some sort of senior assisted, senior living or senior homes, but unfortunately, that is not, that is discriminatory, and it would be viewed as such. So, yes, sir.
Yeah, I will, what the mayor said is true. How the affordable housing market works, though, so most developers apply for tax credits, either at the state or the federal level, and sometimes they get additional points for senior housing, veteran housing, disabled housing, different types of things. So although we cannot require it, in reality, a lot, not all, but a lot of projects do have such components, so that may well occur, FYI.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on items number 10, 1, 7, 8, and number 9?
Hi there, I'm Jose Dalprad. I live on Tacoma Circle, and I just wanted to, again, I'm here to support my neighbors and to make sure that you guys all realize how bad idea rezoning Wanda Circle is. I, I agree that maybe some mixed-use housing here in the city center might be the best solution. Other solutions have been brought up before, but definitely not in Wanda. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larry Hack, and I live on Mesa Drive, speaking on behalf of my parents who built the house 40 years ago. And with the spirit of the city and the way the lots are set up, it's, I think it would be a disaster rezoning the 11 lots into small, smaller lots by, I think it would be, I think it would take away from the spirit of the city. I think it would impede on the property values that people have, and it's not why Villa Park, oop, I think I lost.
Nope, you're good.
Okay. And I think it's not why we live here in Villa Park. And the idea of developing the town center, I think, is wonderful, a rezoning of the town center and of the Smith Basin, I believe it's called, the pit. And the words, the city or the state had used as discriminatory, discriminatory against low income. I think we're blessed to be here. I don't think, you know, if you are low income or if you are poverty, you know, there are, it's, it's a tough choice. It's a tough situation, but I don't think we're discriminatory. People are blessed to be here. They have found a way to move here, and they love this place. And dividing up the lots into little parcels, I think, could be a big problem. So let's go out to, off of Cotella and redevelop that property and bring everybody in that direction. I think it would be a great option. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hack.
Thank you very much.
I did speak to your mother today, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on items 10, 1, 7, 8, or 9? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Could you please pull the microphone closer? Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. I came here to speak about the Wanda Road rezoning. I know many people have spoken about that, and the motion is on the floor. I just want to take a moment to thank you for your diligence, your hard work. I know this isn't an easy decision, and I know it takes a lot of thought and planning. I also want to thank you for your receptivity to hearing from all the residents and your quick response rates when we email and contact you. I think that's admirable. I grew up in Villa Park and on Fernando Circle, right, where Laconia, Laconia Drive meets, and moved back here with my husband and our daughter to have a home that is, is in a safe neighborhood, a place where my daughter can play. And I really think that the Wanda Road rezoning would impact that, would impact the traffic, it would impact crime rates in that area. We've already had some male thefts through there. It's a main, kind of thoroughfare through the neighborhood. So I appreciate you recognizing that and making the motion to remove it. My opinion, and as far as the other options, if I can just throw it out there, I think the rezoning the remainder of the town center or item number 11, rezoning the Villa Park Road parcels are more appropriate options. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on these items? Item 10, 1, 7, 8, or 9? Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. Okay, can you hear me? Sorry. My name is Isaac Novella. I live off Tacoma Circle, have three children, a couple in Little League, and thank you, Mayor Miles, for responding back, and Council Colaquat for responding back. Appreciate it. Just, you know, obviously, I, I think it's, I really, I believe the project, first and foremost, does not improve the safety and well-being of the neighborhood. I do echo Councilmember Pitts' statement in April 13th, when he said, what concerns me about this project is increased safety issues, because now you're dumping all those houses directly onto Wanda. So I appreciate that, and I agree with you. And I also had the chance to look at the board meeting. I think I, I would like to urge residents to closely follow the logic and thinking from our council members, and just, just review it, you know, before the pressure. And I just want to commend Member Rosini. Just thank you for, you know, I think you said you would be remiss at this juncture to even have an opinion. I mean, it's just got out here, so I, I really appreciate that, and you want to hear from us first. So thank you for that and that transparency. And for Councilman Colaquat, you know, for stating on the record, I am more opposed to any element that may disrupt our existing neighborhoods. It's the residents that voted us into office, and those are the people we're responsible to, not the merchants or the business owners, and I want to thank you for that. I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I think that rezoning Wanda will absolutely disrupt our neighborhood. So just, all the other items, I don't really support. I, I think that government can come together, and I think that with Orange County Water District in the headway on our property as a city, I think that that's a good option. I'm not sure who would be there, how it would benefit, but I think it could, and I think it's exciting. And I think that city should develop programmatic incentives for homeowners such as waiving permit fees. I think that'd be great. I might be interested in that. So just for ADUs for granny flats, for cottages, you know, how can we do it, like, organically? So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on these items? Seeing that there is, is there no one else that wants to speak publicly on item 10, 1, 7, 8, or 9? Seeing that there's no other public comment, can we go ahead and restate my motion, which is to remove those items completely from the list? We had my motion, Councilman Pitts second.
Now, I think...
Or since we just had public comment on these, focused more on these particular ones, Councilman Colacott could withdraw his motion and then restate it further and later in the meeting to do that particular issue. It would be cleaner procedurally.
Because I also did not mention that motion, that item as one of the public-
When you asked for public comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Reinsert it later.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Yes, sir, did you have a, a comment?
Will there be any discussion on item number two?
Yes. There will be.
Later on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. City manager, would you please call the roll for the motion to remove item 10, 1, 7, 8, and 9 from the list of options for our housing element this evening?
10, 1, 7, 8, and 9, am I correct?
Correct.
You went backwards. It should be 1, 1, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Be easier for you to follow.
1, 7, 8, 9, and 10, sir.
Okay. So let's just go that way so that everyone's clear. The motion would be to remove items 1, 7, 8, 9, and 10 from the list of options that will be pursued as part of the housing element for the sixth cycle.
And those numbers referred to as enumerated in the staff report for tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you. Okay?
Yes.
So you want a vote, then? We're ready?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Aye.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
So the motion to remove 1, 7, 8, 9, and 10, as enumerated in the staff report, are removed from consideration for the housing element.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on at this time, and I would like to thank everybody who came and spoke publicly on those items and gave our input. So moving on, if there are any other items that anyone would like to speak on, so that would leave items 2, 3, 5, 6, and 11 and 12.
Or anything pertaining to the housing element in general.
Sure. So you didn't have to wait long.
My name is David Malili. I am an original developer and investor here in the town center. We're involved, my company, Asset Property manages, manages the Rockwell Building, the Bank of America Building, Westmore Building, the Union Bank Building, and the Bagelme Building over on the other end. My question is this, this says that you would rezone the remainder of the town center to allow up to 40 units per acre. Are you suggesting that the commercial property would be permitted to be removed and replaced with living units, up to that number of 40 per acre under your zoning?
So the, I'm going to take this off. What the item is referring to is that one option could be that the buildings are removed and replaced with just residential units. Another option could be that the building is still used for commercial on the bottom and then residential up on top, kind of what you see at some of these newer developments like over by Anaheim Stadium. So there is no zoning done yet. That's what this meeting is about. So any public input you would like to give related to whether or not a building gets rezoned for just residential or whether a building gets rezoned for commercial residential? And then again, discussion that the council will have, we can rezone it at 20 units per acre, at 40 units per acre. There is nothing set in stone now, and this is your perfect opportunity to express to us how you feel about these options.
Okay. First of all, do I understand that you mentioned that eminent domain and taking of the property is off the table?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So if we do not want to change our commercial development that has been here for years and is continuing to operate, that we are not subject to any type of takeover by the government?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's helpful there. Number two, if you went to what you're talking about of commercial at the bottom and two or three stories above it, is there a height limitation? And what do you do for parking? Do you go underground and are you allowed to go underground for parking? Because the practicality of what you're describing doesn't work.
So those are very good questions, and actually, beyond the scope of what our exercise is, and here's why. If we, as a council, determine that rezoning the town center for mixed-use commercial residential, it would then be up to a proposed potential developer to make the decisions as far as parking and whatnot. And that developer would have to come to the city and receive approval for any kind of plan he or she then put forth, including design or height limitations to meet a 40-unit, 40-unit per acre or a 20-unit per acre. So I'm not trying to avoid answering your question. What I'm trying to say is, we don't have that answer because our job is to potentially rezone something. If it were to be the town center, it would be up to a developer to make those decisions and then come to that council at that time for guidance, approval, et cetera.
Okay.
Does that help?
That helps. I'm sure I don't have to remind you that the commercial center generates sales tax revenue to the city that cannot be replaced with living units.
No, sir, you do not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else next?
I'm Wayne Solzell, 18202 Montana Circle, 48-year resident. I think we all have understood now that this is a state mandate to all cities in Orange County, not just a suggestion or a choice. Is that me doing that?
No, it's, the door is open, you're getting some reverberation.
Okay. Most of us can identify independent elderly, elderly widows and widowers within our own neighborhoods, right here in Villa Park. They're living alone in big houses, struggling to maintain the house and the yard. They haven't sold and moved to smaller, more suitable housing that fits their needs because they want to remain here among our friends and family in Villa Park and familiar local services that they've grown accustomed to. They may also have limited income, as Prop 13 has made it less costly to remain here where they, where they are than to move to a smaller, more suitable dwelling. But they're usually more expensive and they, then they would have to seek out new grocery stores and other services, doctors and so forth if they move far away. The cost factor to do all that is keeping a lot of people right here, right in our own neighborhoods. I can count four or five within a block. Now, they're not all of them needing yet, but they're in their late 70s and they're healthy. But someday. Unfortunately, Villa Park doesn't offer alternative senior housing. This zoning mandate may be our opportunity to develop long-term, longtime friends and family to remain here rather than have to move to senior housing facilities outside our city. I'm thinking of Bob Hilton, former city council member, who practically cried because he couldn't find housing here but couldn't keep his house going. And I know he wouldn't mind my mentioning him names personally. I can think of four people which I don't feel right to mention their names, right in my neighborhood. And I'm 85. I suppose someday I'll feel that way. Do you think I want to go find new friends in Phoenix or, no, my family's here. And I got a grandson, I think, is going to take my house over hopefully someday. So this is the sort of thing we're dealing with, with a practical standpoint. And I have assured those out there outside, standing and waiting, very genuine neighbors, that you guys are a strong council that are committed to serve them. And I know you'll make-
Solzell, 30, 30 seconds, please.
And I know you'll, you'll do that. Thank you for the time.
And thank you, thank you for your service. For those that don't know, Mr. Solzell was on the council for many years as well, so appreciate your input.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Robinson, and I live off of San Yego Canyon Road. And I understand the importance and need for additional housing, and I'm well aware of the requirements for updating city general planning housing elements. However, I was quite concerned when I read that rezoning 22 acres of Santiago Creek open space was the most discussed option by the Villa Park City Council to meet the housing element update requirements. It was stated by one that to invade a green space would be painful and changing the zoning restrictions for properties or open space will not be reversible, and that's accurate. And it was stated by another that this natural space is not tremendous value, and I disagree wholeheartedly with that. In addition, the guidelines provided for completing housing element updates discourages the use of area-zoned open space for housing purposes. There are several residents in the cities of Orange Villa Park and unincorporated county pockets in the area that have been working to protect the Santiago Creek corridor for years because of its tremendous value as part of the Green Belt Plan. Residents and developers had a vision for this area over 50 years ago and identified it as one needing protection for the health and well-being of the community. And as all, we all deal with urban sprawl and our needs and wants to maintain a small rural town feeling, this open space is necessary more than ever for the health and recreation of residents, the respite our eyes and bodies all require from urban sprawl, the protection of the watershed and to decrease the chance of flooding to existing homes, protection of endangered and threatened species that inhabit the area, for preservation of our clean drinking water, for allowing connectivity to other open spaces in our cities to retain biodiversity, and to act as a carbon sink to lessen climate change. I recommend considering a combination of two of the other options, the addition of ADUs and the modification of zoning for the Villa Park Town Center, where I shop all the time, to accommodate mixed use, including housing. There's such a wide variety of services at this wonderful center that new residents would be able to walk rather than drive to meet many of their needs. Ensure there'd be some disruption during development, however, that disruption would be temporary and the result would be in addition to a thriving, vital community rather than subtracting valuable open space that the human, plant, and animal community need to thrive. I urge you to take development of the 22 acres of Santiago Creek open space off the table and have the vision of a protected Santiago Creek corridor that our generation, those that follow, can enjoy. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Hello?
Good morning, good evening. My name is, are we having fun yet?
Yes, just, we, speak closely, please, so we can all hear you.
Thank you. My name is Mary Beth Felsen. I live on Feather Hill Drive, and I've been a resident of Villa Park since, oh, for 42 years. I hate to admit that. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the gravel pit option. Many residents consider the gravel pit the best option for the city to meet its RHNA allocation of 296 units. The gravel pit, it's owned by the Orange County Water District. It's officially referred to as the Smith Basin. It's easier to call it that. The base, Smith Basin is in Villa Park, and I think it's zoned for open land, if I understand the zoning correct. The area of the Smith Basin, one of its most desirable features is it's a large parcel, 22.5 acres, which exceeds the area which we, to meet the current RHNA allocation of 296 units, may also be needed in the future if additional units are required. If we have excess area, it could be used for other needs, a community center, maybe a park. But we have this opportunity and we, we better take it before we lose it to something else. The Smith Basin has probably the least impact on adjacent residential Villa Park neighborhoods than any of the other options. I think you know this already. The ingress and egress through Villa Park Road will, in effect, limit the amount of traffic and parking impact on the adjacent streets. That's certainly not true for Wanda, and it's certainly not true for Tropical Plaza, where that traffic and parking is going to overflow. The site is considerably lower than, oh, one other, so the site is considerably lower topographically. So it should be possible that the views from the homes will continue to be open sky and not multi-story buildings. These are positive benefits of this choice. I think what I like about this option the most is Villa Park has got to start looking at the future. We're faced with challenges both from a revenue perspective and from a AB9, whatever is AB10, I could list them.
SB9.
Thank you. So this site may be of sufficient size to support a mixed-use residential commercial solution.
There's 30 seconds, please.
Thank you. And the added sales tax may generate funds for what I think are going to be additional spaces. I just want to mention that I did look up the Orange County Water District, the analysis of the Smith Basin is, is one of their documents. They've already, they've already determined a project will be needed to, to stop the erosion of the, of the, of the sides. For those who have questions about the environment, it's in that plan. They talk about noise, vibration, the, the land, the scenic impact. All of them came out to, none of them were determined to be significant. So why would OCWD work with us?
Ms. Felsen, I'm sorry, three minutes is up.
Okay. You certainly, we, we learned five, we heard from five minutes, and now it's three minutes.
No, it's been three minutes the whole time, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I'll just say, OCWD, they can get a lot of revenue from this opportunity. I think it'll be an incentive them to work with us.
Thank you. Next.
Lift up the mic. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Miles, Mayor Protem Zimmerman, council members, city staff, and Villa Park residents. Thank you for the opportunity to, to voice my opinion tonight. I am here to voice my opposition to rezoning the Tropical Plaza parcel for the primary reason that it's unsafe. The option proposes zoning for up to 76 affordable housing units, which based on the city's assumptions means 304 residents, 152 vehicles, and 600 additional car movements in the area. All this in a small area bounded by Meats, Santiago, and Serrano. This area is already heavily impacted by traffic related to four schools in close proximity. In the mornings, the Orange Lutheran backup extends past the Serrano-Santiago area. Serrano area, Serrano Avenue, excuse me, a very narrow street, is heavily impacted by school traffic, parking, and pedestrians, mostly children. It cannot safely support more pedestrians and cars in this area. Parking will be another problem. Existing parking on Serrano Avenue will undoubtedly be taken by overflow parking from new residents and their guests. Lack of parking on Serrano will force school parents onto Feather Hill, Bryn Mawr, and Dodson Way, none of which have sidewalks, creating an even more hazardous situation for children walking in the area. Of all the options under consideration, this option affects the most people and is the greatest safety risk, not only to Villa Park residents, but to their guests, school workers, schoolchildren and their families, and anyone who travels in this area. Why would we consider creating such an unsafe and congested area in our city with an option that fails to fully satisfy the number of housing units required? Conversely, we do have an option that is the safest. It impacts the least number of Villa Park residents and exceeds the current number of housing units required. It is the gravel pit or Smith Basin on Villa Park Road. As Councilman Pitts mentioned earlier this evening, we need to be looking forward beyond the immediate mandate that we have before us. Just imagine, between the last cycle and this one, we went from 14 to 296. What's coming next? We need to be looking beyond this mandate, and this option at the Smith Basin has more potential than any other option and provides safety and least impact to our residents. Thank you for hearing me out and thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those outside, there are empty seats inside, if anyone wants to come inside. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Eric Polito. I'm a resident, a new resident, a new family, so thank you Villa Park for embracing me. I really enjoy, I love working, living here. We've been working from home since, you know, the pandemic, of course. So Robbie, thank you so much for those videos last year, I mean, under the imaginable, unimaginable stress that's, thank you though for being, being candid as open as possible with us.
We need to be looking beyond this mandate, and this option at the Smith Basin has more potential than any other option and provides safety and least impact to our residents. Thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those outside, there are empty seats inside, if anyone wants to come inside. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Eric Palito. I'm a resident, a new resident, a new family, so thank you Villa Park for embracing me. I really enjoy, I love living here. We've been working from home since, you know, the pandemic, of course. So Robbie, thank you so much for those videos last year, I mean, the unimaginable, unimaginable stress that's... Thank you, though, for being candid as open as possible with us. But yes, so I live in Serrano, right across the street from Serrano Elementary, and my biggest concern, of course, is with the development of Tropical Plaza. I admire the guys from the other development, you know, or from the one that rezoned, to, you know, not organizing, you know, I guess, you know, providing more... Okay. I admire the group with the Wanda Group, you know, organizing, you know, and I wish we had more organization in terms of the impact that Tropical Plaza would really have. I live, as I said, across the street from Serrano Elementary, so as of now, I already experience, you know, the traffic flows. Unfortunately, you know, I see, I don't mind, of course, the pedestrian flow of traffic during the rush hours in the morning and the afternoons, but it does get very chaotic during those times. And to add another hundred or so developments, it's something unimaginable for me. So I just strongly urge the team here to remove that from the proposed options, because also I work in construction, I work in development. So as you all understand, hopefully you do understand, if you put that out there, of course, that's no taking that back. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Villa Park.
Hi, my name is Grace B. Ornstad. I live on Orange Grove Circle. Question for you. The Bank of America that's been closed for a year, why can't we just rezone that for something else for housing? Villa Park residents haven't used it for a year. Seems like that would be a prime opportunity for senior housing or new apartment complex that would be mixed rezoning for the shopping center, also adding something on top of where the veterinary offices are, a second story there. You talked about adding a third story right here. Seems like adding a second and a third story there would possibly add more units. And I also think that the ADU is a good option since we don't have any open land here, and I think using money from the CARES Act that the city gets and incentivizing residents to build the ADUs, maybe giving each person thirty thousand dollars towards the cost, plus waiving the fees, would be a good opportunity to get those units built and hopefully fill our quota.
So would you like me to answer some of the questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So I believe your first question was why not go ahead and rezone to be able to build up on top of the Bank of America, which has been empty for the past year. We don't own that. That is not city-owned property. That is privately-owned property, and that is included in one of these options as far as if we were to rezone Town Center. That would be included in that. Again, it would be up to the council to determine whether or not that was at a twenty-unit-per-acre, twenty-density units per acre or a forty unit per acre. So that could be on the table if we all, you know, choose that. As far as incentives with ADUs, I believe that has been proposed. And then the CARES Act money, I don't believe that the Department of Treasury has put out the requirements yet and the guidelines for what we can use it for, but if they did...
It was just an idea.
That would be an awesome thing. However, and again, I have to stress that the city is not the ones doing the development. A rezoning project would mean that a developer would have to come and show interest in that property if we were to rezone that.
Right.
So...
I have one question, too, about the gravel pit, Smith Basin, whatever you want to call it. We don't even own it, so how's that on our plan of options since Villa Park doesn't even own that property, and we're putting that as a possibility for us to use?
Great question. You're right, we do not own it. That is public land that is currently owned by Orange County Water District. However, it does fall within the city boundaries. So Orange County Water District, if we were to rezone it, Orange County Water District would have to be amenable to, or open to, a potential developer should that scenario happen.
So it is still an option, then?
It is still an option.
I thought it wasn't because we didn't own it.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Shemim Wu, and I, along with my husband Jordan and our two daughters, live on Camden Circle. I'm here to express on the record my opposition to rezoning the area labeled as Option Eleven or Santiago Creek on today's agenda. We moved here five years ago from Eastvale, before it was incorporated, and so I'm acutely aware of the challenges from a city that's under development. It was the most significant driver in our decision to leave there and move to Villa Park. As all of you know, we love living here and volunteering our time to put on events and make the community a better place to live. The basin must not be rezoned for hundreds of AHUs, which account for one-hundred-and-twenty-two to nine-hundred-and-one units. This has the potential to put thousands of additional residents in a twenty-two-acre parcel. In addition to the challenges that have already been mentioned around traffic, safety, impacts to school, et cetera, there is a conservation issue with the multiple species that inhabit that area. I encourage the council to create a plan within the Town Center, which I believe is listed as Option Two. The current options as they are are pitting neighborhoods within the city against each other, and it is becoming a local version of the Hunger Games. It feels antithetical to the culture that we work to create every day here in our city. It's the hidden jewel for a reason, and the city and the multiple owners of this center should figure out how to develop the space. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for all your volunteer work you do with the Halloween Fest.
We love to do it.
Are we having a Halloween Fest this coming year?
You better believe it, but only if everybody gets vaccinated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment on any remaining item? Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Miles and members of the City Council, I'm Joel Fick, and I moved to Villa Park three years ago because of the great neighborhoods and the residents of the city that make Villa Park such a great place to live. I want to first compliment you, Mayor, and the City Council and staff for dealing so comprehensively with such a difficult issue. It's really refreshing to have a city council that's interested in minimizing the impacts associated with the mandates before the city, because not all cities approach the RENA numbers that way, and also a city council that wants to maintain our quality of life of our neighborhoods. I only wanted to speak really to two items quickly. First, I understand and appreciate the global desire to have as many options on the table to submit HCD. I would suggest, however, that it may not be wise to have every conceivable option on the table, as possibly suggested by the consultant earlier, as our city will be faced with this same dilemma every five to ten years, and will be having to come up with additional options every cycle that we go through this. I would suggest having reasonable options to meet the RENA goals. We have to submit HCD and nothing more, and hopefully the plan will be approved by the state at that time, and should the state have a problem with our submittal, we could adjust it further at that time. Second, for all of the reasons the City Council identified in removing other options and preserving the character of Villa Park, I would suggest also removing the option of allowing more than two accessory dwelling units per lot unless it's extremely focused in terms of their locations. It seems that potentially having three or more units on a lot in addition to a single-family home could dramatically impact neighborhoods, neighbor-to-neighbor directly, and also change the character of a street or neighborhood very much. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My husband and I and our two children are very proud to be Villa Park residents for the past year, and we actually moved here from Fountain Valley for the same exact reason that's happening here, rezoning. Our house bought it against a church. Unfortunately, the tenants was going down, so they sold half the property and they erected some homes. I'm not against finding home to everyone. I'm a real estate agent, and I understand the reason behind it totally. We need to have more affordable housing. But I think this city is so special in the way they put out their rules when they first incorporated, and for that reason, we moved here, because of the privacy and the excellent way people are living. We just enjoy walking the streets because of how awesome this place is, and I feel that we might be starting thinking, moving again, and I hate to do that, honestly. It's just very emotional for us as a family. So I'm just voicing my concern here that you, as the council, I appreciate your help, and I'm just requesting that you're putting more thought into not congesting the Wanda Street with that project and maybe find other alternatives, maybe the Town Center.
So ma'am, I don't know if you got here a little late, but we have removed the Wanda option off of the table.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, I did come late. Thank you for your service, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Mayor Miles, City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brad Reese. I'm a twenty-three-year resident in the city of Villa Park. I love the city. It's the greatest place in the world. This is a very tough issue for you all. I want to commend you guys for the package you mailed out to all the residents. It was extremely thorough. A lot of thought went into it, a lot of work went into it. I know it's a lot of expense to send that to all the residents. I went through it in detail. I've looked at all the options. I've reached out to each of you individuals. Thank you for your availability. You guys are doing a great job. I know it's a thankless job. I want to thank you for the job you do. I'm here specifically to talk about the Tropical Plaza property. Selfishly, I do live in the area off Feather Hill Street. During all the years we've lived here, that area is very dense, as I know you guys already know. I'm very concerned about safety and traffic. I really think having that building, whether it be two-story, three-story, who knows how many stories it could be, maybe it could be four stories, I don't know. It's a small amount, one-point-nine-one acres, I believe, is what it is, one-point-nine acres. Very opposed to having it right next to an elementary school. Not smart. This upper-story building is going to be looking right down on all the children. That's just a recipe for disaster already, not to mention the traffic of the four schools. I think you guys realize the Lutheran school down the street, a lot of them park at the Sears. Well, guess what's going to be redeveloped someday? All that parking down there may go away. That means all those cars are now coming back up to Lutheran again. It is a very dense area. Meats Avenue is a raceway, as I'm sure you guys know. We've looked in the past to making Meats an egress or ingress, and we, City of Orange said, no way, it's too dangerous. We all said that, too. It's very tough to get in and out of that small piece of property at Tropical Plaza. This will be very hard on all the neighboring residents that live in that area. I think it's a very bad idea specifically for safety and traffic. I think there are other things on the table that we could choose as a city, not going there. I kind of like a multi-pronged-type approach rather than, you know, some people have talked about different things. I think if we propose just the Water District property only, the state will shoot us down. If we propose maybe a smaller project at the Water thing, that might be good. Then we come here and take a look at the office building next door, and we grow that by twenty-eight or maybe up to forty. That could be okay.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. But anyways, the last thing is, of course, the ADU unit. So I think there's just some creative ways we can go, and I just urge you all not to go with the Tropical Plaza. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for your service, former mayor and council member.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Outside, are there... Absolutely.
I'd like to explain the safety issue. It's going to, there's no question that parking is going to be a problem on Serrano.
Will you please speak in front of the mic?
Thank you. I always forget to put it on, and now you're reminding me.
Speak in front of the microphone.
And pull the microphone in front of you.
Okay. What we're facing is the overflow of parking from what will probably be a four-story building with one-hundred-and-sixty-two, one-hundred-and-fifty-two parking spaces, but parking's going to overflow. Serrano Avenue is very narrow, and it has very limited parking so we can keep the school flow. If the parking overflows from this facility and fills up all those parking spaces, there will be no parking spaces for the parents dropping their drop-off. There will be no parking spaces for the athletic events. Another concern is, you drive on that street, now Steve's done a great job, he's got so many signs on safety that it lights up at night, but one of the things you'll see is we have eight no-U-turn signs, and that's because we have a, there's a flow where people turn into Serrano, make a U-turn at Feather Hill or further up, come down the street, go back on to Santiago, and then they will enter the facility. Those U-turns are extremely dangerous, which is why we have eight no-U-turn signs. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is, when you are driving on that street, because it's narrow, it's not a four-ling road, and all the parking is full, you cannot see when people are trying to cross, and you have, it goes down to fifteen miles per hour or less. You have to drive very, very slowly because young children will jump across, older people will suddenly jump across and want to cross the street, but you can't see them, so you have to drive very, very slowly. There's going to be a very serious impact on that street. We're concerned about the overflow of the U-turns, the parking on Feather Hill, on Brenmore, and Dotson. We've lived with this before. That's why we consider it to be such a major safety issue, bringing in so many more cars, so many more, so much more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the remainder of these items? Okay, at this time then, I will close public comment and open up for council discussion. I'll go ahead and... Yes, sir.
Sorry. I was wondering if we could have John Douglas or perhaps the city manager talk about what happens if we agree to stuff that doesn't get, that isn't feasible or doesn't happen over the next eight years, and what the ramifications of that are.
I'll let John, because it can get pretty subjective about what state HCD might do. So John's probably got more experience with that.
Yes, Mayor and council, very briefly, if the city zones property to allow additional housing and no housing is built on one or more of those properties, then in the next housing element cycle, eight years from now, those undeveloped properties could be used again to satisfy future obligations. Now, I should caution us all, myself included, that that could change depending on legislation that might happen in the future, but that is the rule as of today. If property is still available eight years from now, then it can satisfy a future obligation.
So, John, I would also add that to the extent that a certain amount of progress is not made, HCD would be watching us, they could, in fact, come back and ask us to reevaluate our housing element, given that nothing is happening. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that is correct.
So they could come back mid-cycle, even though it's an eight-year certification process, they may say, in fact, conversations we've had with HCD said, we're going to be watching, and we'd like to know how you're doing, and they could come back and ask us three, four, or five years and say, you know, you're not making any progress or satisfactory progress. We need to reevaluate your housing element and put us on notice of potential decertification of our housing element.
Thank you.
Again, it's very subjective and in the hands of HCD, so John and I are both sort of giving you the parameters of what could happen, with neither one of us being very certain about what would happen. It just, there's a range.
Steve, and if I may add, every year, we are required by state to provide an annual housing report, or progress report, excuse me, to HCD, and they will monitor not only our city, but every city in the state of California as far as, you know, what our progress are towards meeting our RENA numbers.
Thank you. That was a great question.
So again, if we were to, let me just put a scenario, if we were to, for some reason, if we were not making progress because a developer hadn't come forward, that's different than if the city were to, say, implement some sort of ordinances or something down the road that became a challenge and made it more difficult for somebody to do it. So there's a set of implications that the city, that the HCD would be looking at. So for instance, if we said, if we said, adopted some ordinances that become impediments to development or make it much more difficult, that is probably going to draw the ire and the attention of HCD, much more so than the fact that if a developer just hasn't come forward. There's a different categories of things, so it's, that's an element that also needs to be considered. So you can't adopt something and in six months from now or two years from now, adopt something that makes it very difficult to build, so we sort of counter the intent of the housing element.
Sure.
So if we have this new mandate for the state to have five million homes, is it also possible that that could be rescinded? And then what's the... And then what would, what's the impact to our plan? Are we able to adjust it or pull things back if that were to change?
The housing element is a, is a, something that's approved by the city council and can be amended, the general plan can be amended by the city council through a public hearing process. So they would have the ability to go back and address that to the extent of something. I would offer that the governor came out today with a huge housing money pot, billions, not millions, billions of dollars to be directed toward development of new housing. So I believe that the current administration, to the extent that they're still in Sacramento, have the, every intention of moving, continuing that as a priority. So, but a new governor could come in and say to HCD, we want to change things, and that reality may change. I mean, that's the simple reality.
Yeah, well, a lot of it's statutory, though, right? So it's cooked into the law. So in order to change the law, you would need both legislative approval and governor approval, unless there's an override, right? But as Steve was saying, yes, the general plan is a legislative act, which the city can amend in the future. If the law were to change to not allow as much housing, theoretically, that could be changed. That would reopen us, under the current law, to the certification process again. So we'd have to deal with that. So, yeah. And you can, once you, once you zone property to allow for more density, you can always reverse that in the future. Now, you don't want to do it in the middle of a project, because then there's certain constitutional issues which arise. So that's not advisable. But, yeah, I mean, it is potentially possible.
Thank you. I would like to go ahead, and I've, I've, I've put together an option that I'd like to present to all of us for discussion, both in positive and negative. So I'll just go through it. To achieve our RENA number for this particular cycle, in coming up with this, my thought process was, again, wanting to make it so that the least impact on the greatest number of residents, and that whatever we as a council decide, we need to facilitate future councils to be able to accommodate future RENA numbers. So let's not think too big, right? We need to make sure that we are aware that in eight years, none of us will be on this council. We need to be considerate of them as well. So I'll start with, and if you want to get your calculators out, 80. ADUs with incentives, such as waiving the permit fees, pre-approved plan checks, et cetera, that gives you 80 housing units. These were already on the table from our first discussion with HCD that we presented back in December. So I'm keeping these on to, might as well get the credit that HCD was already giving to us. The next one is, again, keeping with what was already allocated, the town center portion here, which is City Hall, the library, and this commercial building over there, keeping that at 28. Not increasing it as proposed to the 40 units per acre, but keeping it at 20 units per acre. So I have 80, and I have 28. As far as the pit goes, there is a western portion and an eastern portion. The eastern parcel of the pit is 17.96 acres. I propose we rezone that, not to exceed 20 units per acre as mixed use. This would be the least directly intrusive to existing Villa Park homes. It's on the perimeter of town. It abuts the fewest homes. That would give us 360 units. It would, it would end up with the least amount of traffic going through the center of our existing city. And this would be the area with the least significant amount of change, if any, in a property value for homes on the patrician area, since the proposed site is at a lower elevation than the existing homes on patrician. If we were to rezone that and a developer, it was to come to fruition, there could be a potential increase in, in the economic impact to Villa Park if the site was developed as a professional retail mixed-use with affordable housing. And only using one portion of this pit allows future councils to be able to have some wiggle room should RENA number reach them in eight years. So if I have 80, 300, 360, and 28, that gives us 468, which is 172 increase above what our RENA allocation number is, which I believe that HCD would look on favorably. I like the idea of not putting everything all in one spot for a couple of reasons, but most importantly, in HCD's response to us on page six, for, from their review of the options that we submitted back in December and got the response in February, they specifically said that the element should include specific commitment to encourage development on the city-owned site. So seeing that we don't own very many city-owned sites, that's why I'm keeping the rezoning of this. So if we were to go with option one, that would give us 468 potential affordable housing units. And I'm open to discussion, motions, anything. Yes, sir.
I like your general idea about the Smith Basin site, developing it in two phases. It's going to take some time to, to fill that whole basin. The idea is to, you know, the model is the developer's idea over, behind Blue Ribbon Nursery of allowing tipping fees. So filling it in that fashion is going to take some time. It's going to take some time to develop the drainage improvements. And also, the, the Orange County Water District has already certified a negative declaration on that site, a 488-page negative declaration, I might add. And they've determined, as was mentioned earlier this evening, that there's no significant impact with basically removing the vegetation from that site to do the improvements that they deem necessary. I think, you know, if we focus on one, one part of it for, you know, our immediate need, but work with the water district, that, okay, for the future, we're looking at the other part. There will need to be some drainage improvements. It's going to cost some money to do that. And, you know, so that we have an understanding that, yeah, there's some time in the future we, we may want to develop that site for affordable, but leave that open. It may end up that we don't need more affordable housing units, and it could be developed for, you know, a new city community center, park, whatever. But just to make sure that the, the whole site is earmarked at some point in time for some, some improvement that would benefit the city. But, yeah, focus on one side of it for our immediate need, sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
So, so if I could just interject, and I appreciate what the councilman's saying, I just want to clarify, the city would not be developing that. So we need to make sure that we're very careful here, that we're not acting on behalf of a developer or doing something that would be that way. We certainly could support them and, in their efforts, and work with them on any issue. But again, the prerogative first lies with the water district, but the city could do everything possible to help facilitate that. But we wouldn't necessarily be developing anything or moving forward on that. Just, just for clarification, I don't want to step out of bounds here and, the city attorney and I have had these discussions. We don't want, we want to make sure that we are not acting on behalf of a developer for a number of reasons.
Certainly not. In the, actually, that reminds me of the comments made by Mr. and Mrs. Sillsell earlier about, you know, potential for, you know, senior housing there. Well, if it's, if it is rezoned and if the city, the Orange County Water District, you know, agrees with us and works with the, with us on that, yeah, the city would not develop it, but maybe we could work with the Orange County Water District to seek grant funding, you know, to support grant funding.
That's, we could, and my experience is that typically that's what's done. We would help potentially identify some funding sources that might be workable for developing that. That's, that's the role that typically cities have made, is that there's a financial participation, not necessarily a development participation, but there is some sort of contribution and/or help identifying possible funding sources that might do it. So like you say.
Again, that, that the general concept presented by the Sillsells is a way of making some lemonade out of our difficult situation that we're facing today, that, okay, if we can take that and help address some sorely needed city needs, that'd be the best outcome.
Thank you. And one thing I do want to point out, so on that, the negative declaration that you mentioned, Councilman Colacott, I looked at that, and not to be misleading and to be completely transparent, that negative declaration did say that there was no significant impact because of, you know, redoing that slope. But it did, it has that because there is no housing on it. So that would not substitute for if, in fact, it was rezoned, and if, in fact, a developer did come and make the offer to the Orange County Water District, and if, in fact, it did get developed, that negative declaration would not be considered as valid, because that negative declaration is discussing specifically the fact that there is no housing on it. So it would need the necessary environmental impact reports, et cetera.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on that option that I've presented, please? I'd like to have the full council's.
I would prefer that we keep all options open at this time and all acreage open. Take this thing off. I'm just concerned about what Sacramento's going to do. I share the residents' concerns about maintaining some green space, although that is frankly not really usable green space whatsoever. It's closed off, it's locked, you're not really supposed to be in there whatsoever. But at the same time, I don't want wall-to-wall buildings. If I wanted to live in Irvine, no offense, I'd move to Irvine. You know, they have some beautiful areas there, but that's just not where I'd choose to live. And I think that's what majority of Villa Park, why we chose to move here. I equate this entire thing, this entire situation to Sacramento, literally hitting a teeny-tiny finish nail with a sledgehammer without care or concern for the wood that they're going to break. And the wood is our community. So let me just say this again. In 2022 and in 2024, make sure you vote and think about who you're voting for and what their agenda is, because this is their agenda, the folks that are in charge right now. Think about it. Getting back to the topic at hand, I'd say we look at the entire, both parcels, as the most significant option, not to exceed 400 units combined there. I want to make sure there's enough meat on the bone for the developer, potentially to get it done. I like your numbers. I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I would say about 400, give or take. I'm not dead-set on that. Keep the town center at 28.
That portion of the town center.
Correct.
Yeah.
And let's hope the 80 ADUs manifest themselves. It certainly looks like that's going to be the case, with the understanding that waiving of the, the good faith effort on the city's part of waiving fees and helping residents accomplish those goals. That's it. Thank you.
So the only difference you're suggesting is, because in this option that I'm proposing, it's the, it, it's the 80 ADUs with the incentives, the 28 that have already been through the, the fifth housing element. And then my proposal was 360 of the easternmost portion of the pit, and you're suggesting 400?
Yes.
On just the eastern portion?
No, 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 on the entire.
On the entire thing.
Let's make sure that whatever we notice to the public is something we vote on tonight. It's my only caution.
Right. So would you like to weigh in on, on any of those options?
I, I also think we need to be realistic about what we put forward in terms of the opportunity to do something with this and make it happen in the least obtrusive way. No matter what you do with that pit down there, still going to cause traffic in Villa Park. It's still going to put a stress and strain on the infrastructure that we have around here. So, I mean, because people are going to come here to the grocery store, they're going to Target, they're going to Walmart, they're going that way. They don't, there's nothing that way. So keep in mind, they'll be going down Taft, because they'll, they'll turn and go up to Cannon and pop down Taft. And you think you've got speeders now in Villa Park, wait until that 300 or 400, 500 units over there gets built, it's really going to congest Taft. So I just suggest that we try to do things and minimize as much as we can to keep, keep things as normal as possible. Building 1,000 units or 400 units over there is going to cause a problem. And the other thing is being realistic about, can it get done? You know, look at the obstacles that the adjacent, things are going through with OPA and, and other areas. You know, that could stretch over 10, 12, 15 years, and we're right back to where we were today. But unfortunately, we're passing the buck down to the next council, which is eight years down the road or four years down the road. That's my only caution to all of us as we look at these options. Take the least, you know, impactful and also things that are realistic that the HCD will pass. We go and throw all these things at them with multiple owners in, in the town center and something that we don't own and may not ever come to fruition, they're liable to say, no. And we're right back to where we are back in, in June or July, and right back with angry residents again. Just caution you.
Nope. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I, I do not think that there is a one solution for this, plus HCD, and as, at the recommendation of our housing consultant has mentioned, they don't want just one option. However, I will say, we will not know if the pit, Smith Basin, whatever we're calling it, will work unless we ask. And I would hate to leave it off the option, since it is, right now, visibly the least impactful to the greatest number of people, directly impactful to the greatest number of people. I would hate to leave that off. And if it would have worked, we could have satisfied some of that RENA number. I agree. I think that by rezoning that entire thing, we are handcuffing future councils. I think that HCD is going to want a little bit of this and a little bit of that. I think it would be behoove us to, since we already asked them for the 80 ADUs and they granted it, and we've already mentioned the 28 just for this portion of the town center, and it looked like they were granting it, that we continue with that. So I agree with you, Robbie. Anything we do is going to impact everybody. There is not one option on the table that won't impact infrastructure, parking, driving, noise. We just have to pick the least worst one. So, Councilman Colacott.
One item that's not been mentioned tonight or in the other documents is that 296 units that are RENA allocation, staff estimates that we can expect four resident, new residents per unit. So we're talking about an increase in our population of 1,200. And regardless of where you put those 1,200 people, I mean, if you distribute them all around the city, it's going to be 1,200 more, more people in the city. I guess the, the traffic concern is more, how can we keep it off of our residential streets? If we have it on our, our main thoroughfares, that's one thing. If you have it running down, you know, Fitch and Ranch Road or Amberdeen or, you know, Serrano, it's all going to be a major impact. So let's try to keep it on our major, where we can, if we've got options that allow us to keep it on to the major streets, that's to our advantage. On the ADUs, I think, I would like to suggest that we up our ante a little bit on that. But in doing so, that we take the time between now and when we do our final submittal and try to develop a much more robust program promoting ADUs. And one, we, we can look at other cities and what they, they have done. For example, many cities have developed standard plans for, for ADUs, where if you, if you build one of their standard plans, or you come into the city with one of their standard plan units, they give you a building permit by right. No fee, you've, you've already reviewed that, it's approved by our building official, you're good to go. So it makes it faster and cheaper to build ADUs. And those are readily available. They're in the public domain. We can go to Del Mar, San Diego, City of San Diego, San Diego County, LA County. A number of municipalities have already developed have already developed standard plans. It's a matter of us shopping around, find the ones we like, and importing them into our program. We already have a very expedited permit review. We can't really do much better there, thanks to our city manager. We can also do outreach programs to homeowners to promote ADU development. I think a lot of residents are intrigued with the idea of ADUs. I think the more that they understand what they are and how they can be an advantage to them, there'll be much more acceptance and we'll see a lot more built. But it's a matter of reaching out to them, telling them what, you know, maybe holding some workshops on ADU development and letting them know how to develop an ADU, and maybe even developing a frequently asked questions document to help them, you know, understand the process better. So I'd like to see if we can increase the number a bit, you know, and more aggressively try to meet some of our RENA requirement there.
Are you done?
That's it, yeah.
Yes, and I think we can lump all your suggestions under the incentives. You know, those are great, and I think HCD would definitely like all those. I want to caution on, well, not caution, and Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman, and if you don't mind, I'm going to jump the line. I thought also about increasing the number of ADUs that we would present to HCD, and I think, how do I politely say this? I think I would like to see what they come back with first before we throw everything out there, kind of maybe hold on to that a little bit. And if, if our initial proposal is not accepted, brainstorm and come up with some broadening of what you just proposed, Councilman Colacott. That's my two cents. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. So I wanted to start off by just saying that it was incredible and amazing to get all the response from the community, everybody that came in, everybody that sent notifications to us. Really, we're volunteers. We're your neighbors. We live around the corner from you. We have been in the city for a long time, and we're interested in so many of the things that you guys wrote to us. I could just tell, we got so many notices of what you're opposed to, and I agree with all of them. I mean, there really isn't any of the things that are on this list that I'm not opposed to. They're, this is going to change what the city looks like, and I'm not in favor of them. So it's hard to say what's the best option and what's the least painful. I went around and I sat out on Villa Park Road and looked at the Smith Pit, and I sat up off of Santiago and Meats and thought about what it would be like to have a development there. And I sat at the city town center, and I thought about, what is the impact to our city if we put residents or put 1,200 or a lot of people in any one location or try to spread them out? And, yeah, I don't like any of them. It's hard to, you know, I agree with all of the statements that all of our residents have made. There are definite detractors to all of them. I guess when I was doing that, my impression was that of all of the places that we have that are realistically changeable, things that we could do, the one that really made the most sense to me was doing something at the town center. If we did something here where we added those smaller units for the, our older residents, if we did something where it still kept the community here, and we were able to expand that, and we had more people at the town center, they would be next to the stores, they would be adjacent to the restaurants. It would create a vibrant neighborhood here in town center that I think we would all appreciate. I think that would, I can actually see that one being positive in a lot of ways. So in my opinion, I would, if we're looking at the proposal that the mayor's made, I would shift the larger portion of the stuff that she's suggested at the Smith Pit over to the town center. My thinking there is that that Smith gravel area, it is open space. And as Councilman Rossini said, it's not usable, but the purpose of open space isn't necessarily to be usable, it's to be open. And all of the proposals that the Orange County Water District have looked at, while they look at adjusting the slope of the land or doing some gradation or moving stuff around, they definitely don't look at, let's fill this whole thing in and cover it over with houses. That's never been a proposal that they've looked at. They have none of the information about what, how that would impact anybody. And as I sat there looking at it, I thought back to a couple of years ago when it was full of water. And you look at the documents that OCWD has out, they have a five- and a 10-year diagram for what that area looks like when it's full of water, and that water's got to go somewhere. So it's designed to be a basin, and if we fill it in with homes, we lose that. And I don't think we have that same loss if we create a vibrant environment here in town center. I think we gain something instead of losing something. So that's what I'm more in favor of. And if we could take your plan, the incentives on the ADUs, I really like. I do want to caution everybody that while we add ADUs, that doesn't give us any more parking for those people. So we do need to be really careful about what happens when your neighbor puts two additional units on their property. How many more cars are going to be parked on the street in front of you? It's just something to think about. It's something to make sure that we're considering. Again, of all of the options, I'm opposed in some way or in some fashion to all of them, but I think there's a best. So that's where I'm going to leave that.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you for your comments. I, your comments are very logical, which I like. I agree that the town center is a viable option as well. I feel we personally feel that we owe it to the community to try something else first, realizing that if we do present the Smith Basin, and HCD does recognize or decides, determines that there are fatal flaws or that it will not work, that then allows us to come back to the table and look at the other options, such as rezoning the remainder of the town center to a mixed use. I don't know how comfortable I would feel not even asking HCD, because if we don't ask, we'll never know. And then that may have been a suitable scenario that we gave up. And then again, it may not. We may end up submitting something, and they come back and say, yeah, the pit's not going to work. Okay, well, we have the other options to be able to discuss again. So I agree with you, the town center and all the positives that you mentioned on the town center, but I feel that we have an obligation to perhaps try this first. Doesn't mean I'm right. It just, I think that I would like to have HCD tell us it's a bad idea, instead of us thinking it might be a bad idea. That's, that's my two cents. Because, let me ask you this. Steve, if we were to go ahead and decide to make the proposal that where we included, sorry, I only want to do the eastern portion because that western portion affects more of the people on Patrion, but if we were to include the pit in this first, you know, direct U to please put together, and it had the 80 ADUs, it kept the town center over on this part at 28, and then we did that eastern portion, if HCD came back and did say, yes, that's acceptable, and between that point and when we have to give the final actual document, could we then change our mind and say, yeah, you know what, maybe we don't want the pit and we do want to go with town center? Would that option be completely gone?
Until you submit your final plan, obviously you can, but I'm not sure why you would want to do that. If you have HCD tentative approval of a plan, and you said, well, let's change it, then you're going back to ground. And you'd have to ask HCD again, and they obviously could say no, and then we're putting ourselves in a time crunch. So I'm not sure if HCD or the state were to say, that's an acceptable plan, that you would say, well, we changed our mind. We don't want that plan. We want something else. So that, that would sort of confound logic, if you will, because you've submitted a plan that you've all, or a majority of you agreed on, and then to turn around and change it would be something not anticipated, I guess, by HCD, and not, not something of the norm.
Well, and I'm not saying that's something we would do. I just wanted to know if.
Certainly, until the final submission, you can change it.
It would be possible, if that were to happen. Okay.
You have that. Up until the final submittal in October, you have the right to change what you may. Again, the point of asking HCD in advance is so that you are not at last-minute, 12th hour, trying to sort of come to some agreement about some option that, and if you have approval, for instance, like you said, or you, they come back and say, no, we're okay with this and that, but we'd like some tweaks, then you work on those tweaks. So you're not forced into the last-minute, ground zero, starting all over again.
Okay. One, just one moment, please. Councilman Pitts, do you have any comments about this?
No, the only other option that I had was the Tropical Plaza. Most of the traffic is not going to dump onto Serrano. Most of it will dump on Santiago. Most of it will go towards Walmart, Target, places like that. They might come over here because it's a block and a half away to shop for groceries. But if you think about the least impactful for traffic, it's probably there compared to all the others. And there's parking there, there's units there. They're not going to dump on Serrano, and there's things you can do to prevent people glaring down at people on the schoolyard. So that would be my only other modification to this, along with the ADUs and the town center that we've talked about. That's kind of the original proposal that I put forward some time ago. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Councilman Colacott?
The alternatives that we're looking at today are open to the public. They've, we've published our agenda, you know, we know what, and we've provided descriptions of what all the alternatives look like. So I gave a call to Dave Navarrette, who's the Housing Policy Development Manager up in, at HCD on Friday, just to, you know, get an idea about, you know, what he thought of the general concept of the Smith Basin. He said that, stated that he supports the concept of a larger development like this, that something like the Smith Basin may provide. He said, well, he, that HCD, if we did approve it tonight, and we did put this in our plan that was submitted, they'd be looking at at least 20% affordable units. It wouldn't have to be 100% affordable units. That if council, he also added that if councils did support the Smith Basin and, you know, submitted it, that HCD would be open to discussion of a longer-term development plan, recognizing that it would take some time to get that, that large pit filled. And, but he also added that he would entertain supporting Villa Park in our discussions with Orange County Water District regarding development of a rezoned Smith Basin, again, if it's approved by the full city council and submitted as part of our package.
Can you please talk into the?
So I think that the, the option is viable with, from perspective of HCD, and I would encourage staff to follow up on that discussion and get, get more insights from, from Mr. Navarrette.
Thank you. Councilman Rossini, do you have anything?
I just, I want to thank Councilman Zimmerman, or, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman for his comments. I think I originally was a pretty big proponent of the town center, but as I learned, having the number of different owners that the town center has and trying to get them to agree upon a project may be very challenging. So I think that we should explore other options, the options that I mentioned, the Smith Basin, the ADUs. I also agree and have concerns about parking that they're going to create and traffic. Again, but these are issues that Sacramento is creating, and Sacramento is forcing down our throat and forcing our residents. And then obviously the 28 units that are already approved here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas? I was wondering if you could weigh in, please, on kind of this preliminary option one that I've thrown out with the 80 ADUs, rezoning the easternmost portion of that Smith Basin at 20 units per acre, and then the existing town center, you know, City Hall, library, and the building next to us at 20 units per acres for a total of 28. Do you have any input, expertise, comments on that?
You know, I have learned over many years that you don't know for sure what answer you're going to get from HCD until you see it on paper in black and white. And so, as I said very early in the meeting, the more options that are presented to HCD, the more likely I think HCD is to accept it. But I can't sit here tonight and tell you where the line is. I just, I don't know. My crystal ball is not that good.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
So I do just want to point out, in terms of the Smith Basin, it, there are a number of groups that are going to be empowered to come visit our upcoming meetings. Given the opposition to filling in some of the other open spaces in that same area, if we do propose this development or the rezoning of this area, we should also anticipate that we will get a great deal of additional feedback, let's say, just to leave it at feedback about that proposed development.
Thank you. Well, that's, you're probably right. Again, we will never know unless we try. So I'm, I'm at a point now where if none of us have any other comment or suggestions, you know, I put an option out there.
I would second it, if that's a formal motion.
Sorry. So could we have clarification? I heard discussion on the Smith Basin, the gravel pit, Villa Park Road, whatever. Is that the easternmost portion, or did we go back and say both portions with a limit of 400 units? I guess I need clarification on the motion for that.
So my original option that I presented was the eastern portion, not to exceed 20 units per acre mixed use, and that would give us 360 potential.
For the sake of agreement, I'm willing to concur with that. And it also may be an olive branch to those that would be an opponent. Hopefully, again, there's still enough meat on the bone to convince HCD that it's a truly developable project and gives consideration for those that might oppose it. So.
So as I understand the motion, it would be to include option number two, the town center multifamily use under current zoning, which is 28 units, potential additional accessory dwelling units of 80, and the option number 11, which would rezone the easternmost portion at 20 units per acre, which is approximately 17.9 acres, give or take.
Not to exceed 20.
Not to exceed 20 units per acre. The direction would be for staff to incorporate that into a draft and submit that to HCD for comments and to return to the council when we have those comments.
Correct.
Okay, with that, I guess we take a vote.
Is there any more discussion on that?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
That passes on a three to two vote. So with that, I think that concludes our business this evening.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to thank everybody, our city, city staff, residents. At this time, I will close the meeting. Appreciate everybody's input, and meeting is adjourned at 8:00 PM. Thank you.